Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And if you've just taken a good shot, we've got some nice new waiver mugs there. They're wonderful that are out. And thank you Paige for bringing those to us here. So welcome to our regular council meeting at Waverne City Council being held this day, Monday, November 26th, 5:00 PM, November 26th, 2018. First order of business is approval of minutes of the regular council and strategic planning and priorities meeting held November 13th, 2018. Do you have a motion, please?
Make that motion, your worship.
Anne?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda?
No additions from administration, your worship.
Anybody else? With no additions to the agenda, we have no public hearings or notices, no delegations, proclamations, petitions, no reports of standing committees. If you have the consent agenda, cash activity report, please.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the consent agenda consisting of the cash activity report for October 2018 be accepted as presented.
Worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Counts payable?
Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $5,684,755.33 for November 9th to November 22nd, 2018 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. The water treatment plant chemical supply tender, we have Phil Parkin, our -- pardon me. Tax enforcement. Okay. Director of Finance, Missel?
We have 20 properties that still have taxes outstanding for 2017 original rule. And on May 4th, they received a lien. A lien was registered on these properties. And as per the Tax Enforcement Act, they are getting their six-month notice. So they have six months till May 2019. And if they haven't paid their taxes, a letter will be sent to provincial mediation to request consent of title.
Do we have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that the city assessor be authorized to continue under Section 23 of the Tax Enforcement Act to serve six-month notice to all properties that still have outstanding property taxes from the 2017 original rule for a total of $112,185.15 as provided in the city assessor's report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? No discussion at that point? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Now, Assistant Engineer Phil, who is Parkin, who is taking place of Natter while he is away with the family issues, we shall talk about the water treatment plant chemical supply tender. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the recommendation was made based on a tender that closed out. We made consideration for the source and lead time for delivery and the unit cost of each of the chemicals that were required. And just to quickly run through this list, the recommendations were as follows. We had our first Brentag Canada Incorporated quoted for potassium permanganate at $5.54 per kilogram. We recommended for the second Clear Tech Industries quoted chlorine at $0.98 per kilogram. Our third, for Border Chemical Company, we quoted, or we had a quote for liquid aluminum sulfate at $0.35 per kilogram. Our fourth was, I believe, Clear Tech for hydrofluorosalicyd acid at $1.31 per kilogram. Our sixth, Clear Tech Industries quoted sodium hydroxide at $0.84 per kilogram for totes and a bulk rate of $0.72 per kilogram. And our last seventh entry, we had Brentag Canada quoted Superfloc C496 at $5.79 per kilogram. Thank you.
In hearing that, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that council accept the following quotations for the 2019 chemical supply for the water treatment plant. Number one, Brentag Canada Incorporated potassium permanganate in the amount of $5.54.49 cents per kilogram. Number two, Clear Tech Industries Incorporated chlorine gas in the amount of $0.98 per kilogram. Number three, Border Chemical Company Limited liquid aluminum sulfate in the amount of $0.34.6 cents per kilogram. Number four, Clear Tech Industries Incorporated hydrofluorosalicyd, I believe that's what it says, acid, in the amount of $1.31 per kilogram. Number five, Clear Tech Industries Incorporated sodium hydroxide solutions in the amount of $0.84 per kilogram and $0.7217 cents kilogram in the bulk form. And number six from Brentag, Superfloc C496 in the amount of $5.78.75 cents per kilogram.
Worship, I second that motion, but Counselor Bailey, I didn't really hear you say two and three and four. Were you just -- I'm sorry. You did a tremendous job, Wendy.
I'll explain it to you after council, your worship, or Counselor Mickle. It's, yeah, some of those things. And if I remember correctly, Counselor Mickle, you handed this out to me last year also.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? And it's carried. Very good. Council remuneration, notice of motion. Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, worship. I make a motion that the Waverne City Council approve an adjustment in remuneration of eight and a half percent, which is outside the current city council remuneration policy as a result of the removal of one-third tax exemption for municipal elected officials to come into effect January 1st, 2019.
I'll second that, your worship.
This is first reading? Discussion?
This is the only reading?
Oh, there's only the only reading, okay. And so, the discussion? I guess my discussion is this, that the reason to explain this to the public fuller, that there is no net gain on this increase to both myself and council. What the history of this is, is that simply that to keep things in a very low state of pay for the council members throughout Saskatchewan or throughout Canada, that is, Revenue Canada had that there was no, supposed to be no taxing of the wages on this, our municipal elected members. And that way then municipalities could keep their wages down low. But as of January 1st, 2019, the Liberal Government has saw fit to remove that from the system and thus we are supposed to be paying taxes. And on that, and this adjustment is simply that amount that was supposed to be in the amount that we'd be paying taxes on. So there is, although it may seem like this is a wage increase, there is no net gain whatsoever. All this money is just, that's increasing here is basically going to income tax. Back to your federal government. And that was a federal government decision that was brought about here. And every municipality is dealing with this same situation. Comments? Mr. Van Betje?
Your worship, thank you. I totally agree with what you're saying, your worship, that it's fairly hard for everyone to understand the breakdown of this, but there is, it is really an increase, but just a top, or bringing us back to par, I guess they're taking away eight and a half percent of our wage and we're just topping it back up to where we were. My point of view is, I would like to see us put it off till January 2021, which would put us into the next election cycle. I think we're upon tough economic times in Waverne. I think there's other people that have hardships. And I think it would be justified by the council. It would look good if we set the bar, with the exception of your worship, and I know this is going to sound a little odd, but I do feel that your wage should be topped up because you, it's at least a half-time job, if not close to a full-time job. I think it probably does affect your other income that you're able to make outside of being there. And I know that you probably feel uncomfortable with this suggestion, but I do feel that it is justified for yourself. And I think that we should top yours up right away, but leave councils till January 2021.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, your worship. I'm of the same mind. I think most folks do understand that this isn't a pay raise for council. This is simply backfilling what the federal government is taking in terms of an income tax exclusion that used to be available, that they've just taken that away. But that being said, Counselor Van Betje said this very well, there's tough times right now. And I don't think that it's unreasonable to ask council to not take that. That being said, this is written as one piece, city council, and I think you're right. I think the mayor's wage should be backfilled, that amount, and it should be done on January 1st, whenever that exemption is gone. And I mean that because, I say that because your ability to earn money outside of city councils impacted by the amount of hours required of you to be the mayor. Not that there aren't hours required of council, but not anywhere is near what's expected of the mayor. So I'd like to see this brought back in two separate pieces. A piece for the mayor and nothing for council.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Your worship, I don't think we have to, I'm sorry, I don't think we have to amend the motion. This is good conversation. I can go either way because I can see valid points here. I would suggest, if that's a sentiment of council, we defeat this motion that's presented and make another motion. We don't have to make two motions to exclude your worship in this particular agreement. I do believe, I like the fairness of doing it January 1st, 2021. This way, we're not sitting giving ourselves a pat on the back. As perception out there is, it's not, we're not doing that, but the perception is there. So there is tough times out there, and I totally agree with that. So if the feeling of rest of council is such, let's defeat the motion that I presented. Let's make another one and move on.
Mr. Van?
Thank you, your worship. I would support that with the mayor receiving the compensation January 1st, or not a compensation, the fill-in, if you wish. And as I would accept that also as a, as this current six councillors not to see that increase until, like Counselor Van Betje said, January 1st, 2021. That will be somewhat of a new council, most likely sitting here, and the new people coming in would have a look at that fill-in at that time. So I would support defeating this and going that route also.
Your worship, actually, I agree with Counselor Van Betje. I personally like the idea too. I know him and I had that discussion prior. And it is a tough one because there is that perception that we're sitting here giving ourselves raises, which we're not. We're just topping and getting a net gain. And in that situation too, we're also looking for long-term. We're doing this for long-term, for future councillors, so they're not already behind that eight and a half percent. So I do agree. I would support if this came back as a brand-new motion and whether it's in one or two or however we need to do that. But I do think our mayor should be January 1st this year and then councillors 2021.
Thanks, worship. Can I just ask a question of administration? Is there a regularly scheduled increase in, on the horizon? I don't want to get in the way and muddy those waters.
Yes, the council remuneration policy does state that January 1st of every year, council would receive Consumer Price Index. I believe it is at 1.1, 1.2, somewhere in there. So automatically, you would get on January 1st that Consumer Price Index increase because that's what the policy states.
But there isn't the, like I know a few years back when that study was done, there was, there was an increase beyond the cost of living. There isn't one of those on the horizon.
Not, as I know, not that I know of. Now, council could do, and it was recommended in 2014 when that study was done, that in about five years, there would be a relook at another survey or another study done. This summer, I did gather some information from the cities that we had in the study in 2014. I called all of those cities and got the information. And we're still fairly on par. However, we could certainly, you know, relook at that if council wishes.
Yes. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, I think, I would say we put it at 2000, January 2021. And then the new council could then look at whether they wanted to review their rates, you know, going forward from their term. But I think starting January 1st, 2021, I would say the eight and a half percent. The increase would come into effect automatically on January 1st, 2021, and then the new council could take a look at whether they wanted to do a new review.
May I comment? We're sort of clouding the issue with that. The issue is the eight and a half percent adjustment, the cost of, that we get, what's it called again, to net, the cost of living type thing?
It's based on the Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price Index? Let that move as it is without interfering with what we're actually talking about. That's got nothing to do with this issue at all. That's a separate issue totally. So I say we leave that alone out of the, out of the next motion.
I thank you that you feel that the mayor's job, and I just don't feel it's one-for-all sort of thing that if we, we, if I, if you guys aren't going to, even because you're a part of the group and you're a part, and why go out and do other special attentions to it? You're as much as a part of the group and so, but anyway, go ahead.
Just wanted to add, your worship, that I realize I blindsided you with this suggestion. And I knew you didn't know that I was bringing that up, but I 100% believe that you should get this raised January 1st. I fully believe that, and that's why I did step out and make that suggestion.
Okay. With that then, let's, if you want to defeat this motion, let's say, all in favor of this original motion?
Yeah.
All against? Motion is defeated. Make the new motion?
Your worship, I would like to make a motion that beginning January 1st, 2019, that the mayor position will receive the eight and a half percent.
Adjustment.
Adjustment, yes. And then beginning in January 2021, that all councillors will receive eight and a half percent adjustment.
I'll second that, your worship. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried. With that, moving forward, we have introduction of bylaws. The bylaw council procedure. This is first, now this one is first reading only. City Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes, your worship. So the council procedures bylaw, we're just doing a little bit of housekeeping on this bylaw. Councils just had, I gave you just a quick briefing on it at your council retreat. So just some items that we want to clean up on the agenda side of it. Takeoff requests for clarification, which is on the, is supposed to be on the agenda, but there's really not a reason to have it as it's a bit redundant because we already have inquiries and announcements. And then just to clean up the agenda a little bit, as well as we are adding youth members to, we're going to expand on the youth member to council because right now the bylaw only allows one member, but we have five, so we're going to amend that so that we can have five members according to the bylaw. So we're running the youth council properly. There's some other items there listed in the, in the information. Now, if council wishes and agrees with these changes that are presented, I would recommend that you give first reading tonight. And then as per the public notice policy for the city of Waverne, we'll advertise it in the paper for the next two weeks. And then it could be read the second and third time at the December 10th council meeting.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw 2018-3390, being the council procedures bylaw for the city of Waverne, be read a first time. And further, that administration advertise as per city of Waverne public notice policy bylaw 2003-2049 and be brought back to council December 10th, 2018 for second and final reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? There was no discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. The bylaw, refuse bylaw, City Manager? Or Phil, are you doing?
I'll actually just give you, I just gave you a very brief report. Our Director of Engineering, Kesh, is not available tonight, but he did provide me with some recommendations that he wanted to see in the refuse bylaw. So basically, it's just to add a few definitions just for clarity in the bylaw, as well as adding a couple of sections under controls, just renumbering in the pre-collection practices, adding industrial waste as an item to be prohibitive from dumping at the landfill, prohibiting asbestos in the landfill, as well as delivery of waste can be accepted if allowed under government-issued permit and provision to weigh and keep record, deliver, and keep a record of deliveries. That's another item that the Director of Engineering added. Add in recycling under charges and fees. Also, in Section 9, under penalties and orders, just add a liability waiver and then just add the recycling fees into the schedule. So if council does agree with this, these amendments to the bylaw, then we would do first reading tonight and then we would bring it back on December 10th for second and third reading.
Your worship, I'll move that bylaw 2018-3391, being the refuse bylaw for the city of Waverne, be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship. Discussion? Mr. Van Betje?
Yes, your worship. Again, with our city engineer not being here, it's, I think we'll have to, I have a question on asbestos in our landfill. And I'm wondering if we can look into the cost, the viability of be able to take friable asbestos and other asbestos and storing it in our landfill, providing that service to the city as well as to what could possibly be the demolition of a couple of schools in the future and maybe a hospital in the future. But refusing to take asbestos that is mixed with other construction materials and having, if it comes, if asbestos is coming with other construction materials, then it takes way too much of our landfill up. And I can understand why we cannot provide a space for that. But it's friable material, which is asbestos that's, could be airborne if it's packaged properly, double-bagged and everything, and then the stuff that is not friable can be buried. And if our engineer could take a look at maybe the possibility of doing that, then I think it would be a service that we could provide to, to our city residents and some of the institutions in our city.
Phil, any comments?
I believe the recommendation was for a prohibition, so we can certainly do an analysis in terms of capacity and what we have available. But as it, I guess as presented, the suggestion was that it's across the board a ban on acceptance.
I guess the reason I asked Mr. Van Betje is why you would like to see it stored here as opposed to just total prohibition, just let some, the other places that are taking it already do it?
I think there's a huge cost involved for, you know, for the institutions to bring it to whether it be Regina or Moose Star or some of the other sites. And I'm just wondering if it's, if it's possible for us to provide that service here. It's going to cost the city itself because we have asbestos in some of our infrastructure. And I don't think it would be fair for the city to store this themselves, but have asked the schools or the hospitals to bring it, or other commercial areas to bring it elsewhere.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, your worship. So what Counselor Van Betje is pretty much stating is the cost is quite high. So right now, if you want to take asbestos products to Regina, it's $300 a time. So that's just getting it into the site. So that doesn't include the trucking fees and all those things on top. So we can look into further stuff, into space available, what we can take onto the site and get something back to council that way, just for more information going moving forward. Because right now, if there was asbestos brought to our landfill, I think it's $60 because it's our normal $6 per time fee. But based on what Counselor Van Betje talked about, about mixed loads of debris, that can be quite large, right? That could be lots and lots of stuff going into our landfill, which will take away a lot of our, our space within that. Friable products is a whole different thing. It's a lot less of a take onto the site. But what we'll do is I'll task the engineering department, including Phil, to start looking to what we have for space within the landfill and then bring it back to council as we move forward.
I guess my question, and this, I won't put you on the spot because you wouldn't probably know this, but how much, does anybody here know how much of the junior high, and this is because we had the junior high destroyed on this one, how much did that add to our landfill? Or where did that go?
So the asbestos part of that project did not?
Not, not, not the asbestos, I'm talking about the whole.
Yeah, at this time, I cannot provide you a total number. I can bring that back to you. I can get ahold of school and provide that back to you, but we're not aware of that. I can't provide that at this time.
Because we had, we had two big projects that actually hit our landfill that we really weren't thinking about. And we are, number one, the Waverne Inn. How much did that add to our landfill? And how much did the junior high add to our landfill? And we've got, what, three more projects? Two for sure, and possibly a third project coming into it that's going to really, do we want to have, take up that much?
I for, for, as a councillor, I feel that it's a service that we should try and provide. I think the imperative thing is that we make sure that we have our costs set properly. It's not going to be cheap because we have to allow for what it costs us today to handle that material and what it's going to cost us 20 years, 30 years down the road to have that material on our site. So we have to make sure that our rates are reflective of this.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, worship. If I may, and these are hard questions when you get thrown out now and maybe don't have these answers, but the cost to implement procedures to handle that asbestos might be high just, just at a process level. And I'm wondering, is there, is there lots of asbestos? Like, we had a couple, two or three projects that are big coming up. But other than that, is there really that much asbestos left that it would be worth going down this road of trying to figure out how to handle it properly? And I don't know if that's a question that you can even answer, but that's what's in my head.
So Counselor Richards, right now, the school is actually doing studies on their facilities, right? If they have to do anything with their facilities, they are actually doing that to prepare themselves for a demo. So Queen Elizabeth would be a good example of that. So once they start their new elementary school project, that is the first school that will be constructed. So they're actually doing assessments on that right now. They actually have contractors in place that they would check and see how much asbestos would be in those sites as a plan. Regarding our facilities, you're right, I can't give you that answer. We would know that. It all depends on a lot about the build a year, all those kind of things. So right now, we cannot provide that.
I don't think I'm suggesting that we go ahead that way, but I think it would be nice to know that, to look into it and make, and find out the numbers before we make a decision one way or the other, before we decide to not accept it when maybe it's viable to do the other way.
And the motion that there, the document that kind And the motion that they're the document that kind of what Counselor Van Betje is talking about, isn't really big building structures. It's more pipes. You know, it's more like when you're talking about friable, that's not buildings. We're talking more pipes going forward. So that's kind of a different thought away from a larger facility. But something that as administration, we'll go back and do a little more research about size, square foot we have available on our current landfill going forward for that.
And how it's, this product is supposed to be handled? Is there special ways?
Yeah. So the province has certain requirements, how deep you have to dig the hole, double bagging it, all those kind of things. It's pretty robust of what they require. And you have to make sure you follow the documentation you have for that stuff because there'll be audits afterwards, after you do that kind of, those kind of things. So it's, it's not as easy as just burying it. There's, you know, like I said, double bagging it. And there's a certain depth that you have to do as well. That's why, that's why I say there's, it's a large footprint of what you'll take away when you start taking asbestos.
Okay. With that?
Your worship, I'll just suggest too, if you wanted to, this is only first reading. So this is to get it on the table. So if you were to accept first reading, what we can do then is bring back to a future meeting, proposed amendments. And then during, after the second reading, we could add in any amendments or changes to this proposed bylaw that you would have. So tonight, if you wanted to put it on the table, you would probably pass the first reading. And then we've got our direction to come back to council for second reading and we can provide information from engineering and administration.
Call the question? All in favor of first reading? Kerry Denham. There's no unfinished business, no new business? Are there any inquiries and announcements you wish to make? Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, your worship, I'd just like to again invite people out this Thursday night to the New Age Motorsports Facility for our annual Christmas tree auction for the family place. This is one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. If you've got a chance to tour down there, even if you're not buying, just go take a look at it because it's absolutely remarkable what people have done again this year for that organization in our community.
This all starts at what time?
At six o'clock, six thirty on Thursday night. I think the auction starts about seven. But there's a whole lot more there than just twenty-five, twenty-six Christmas trees. There's a little bit of everything for everybody.
So six o'clock on?
Thursday, this Thursday night, 29th.
Mr. Warren?
Just for us, special events coming up for the city. We have skate with Santa coming up on December ninth at, from two forty-five to four forty-five, Tom's Sports Arena. So you get to skate, meet Santa, get a goodie bag. It's always a great event. So just to welcome all the families down to try and skate. Dick Mickel will be out there skating as well, as always. So.
Santa?
No, he's not Santa. No, Dick is not Santa.
Oh, 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 oh. Yeah, he'll be skating with Santa. Okay. Any other comments? Announcements? So December ninth and this Thursday at six o'clock. On December ninth, it's what time?
It's from two forty-five to four forty-five.
Okay, very good. There's no, any notice of motions? No committee of the whole? So with that, we call this meeting to adjournment. Adjourn the meeting.